Thank you so much for being here and let's see, board members if everybody would come back to their seats so we can get going on our Title I Parent Advisory Committee and your annual report. Thank you so much for being here. If you would introduce yourselves, we would appreciate it.
Thanks, will do. Great to be back. I think this is my fourth year being here, so I know some familiar faces and some new faces. So I wasn't here last year, I had one of my other colleagues come and brief, so I'm excited to be back. Our Title I staff, do you want to introduce yourselves? Go ahead. Okay, sorry, I'm Deanna Downe, I'm the Chair of the Title I Committee. I have three boys, I am a big fan of recess, so I have been in several Title I schools and I actually want to recognize Mrs. Penessi in the back of the room. She's the Principal at Herndon Elementary. We're very fortunate to have her, she came to us from London Town where actually my children had started their elementary education before we moved. So really excited to have her here as well. So go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Rosalyn Rice Harris. Sorry, I should remember that. I'm Rosalyn Rice Harris, I'm Manager of Title I.
I'm Stephanie Almquist, I'm an Educational Specialist with Title I.
Kathleen Waltz, Executive Director, Professional Learning and Family Engagement.
Thank you. Who would like to start us off with your report?
I'll get started, yeah. So really appreciate all of these guys being here as well, we always get great support from the staff in the office. T-PAC, for those of you who have maybe not heard from us before, is a parent advisory committee that really rallies around our Title I schools and tries to make recommendations for how we can engage our parents and other community members and support our schools. The committee has kind of been on a journey the past several years, the four years that I've been there, from kind of being structured but not necessarily parent-led as much, kind of getting input but not so much parent-led, to making some changes over the past several years that really empowered the parents on the committee to take some ownership and start driving our priorities. And I think we'll see that this year, hopefully in what you've seen already in the report and what you'll hear this evening. I'm really excited about some of the ideas that we came up with and things that I think can make a real difference in our schools. Our charge this year is a little bit convoluted, it covers a lot. Talks about key human and technology resources geared around increasing family and community engagement. And that's really, those are the pieces that we zeroed in on, is how can we do a better job of leveraging all of the vast resources of Fairfax County to include both Fairfax County Public Schools and our community resources, you know, businesses and so forth, to support the significant needs in a lot of our Title I communities. So we spent a lot of time this year really looking at that full spectrum and bringing in very specific programs, you know, hearing about specific programs, that's always one of the real valuable things about our committee is just the idea sharing and hearing, "Oh, I didn't even know you could do that," or "I didn't know about this specific program." But also looking at the structure of some of Fairfax County's specific, you know, organizations that are tasked with that. So for example, the Office of Business Partnerships and the Grants Office and things like that, and kind of come in and educate ourselves on, you know, how do those things work and are they working as best they can to support our Title I schools? So I think we really immersed ourselves and came up with some good things coming out of that charge. So just to kind of step through what our major recommendations are, first one came really from the idea of, I guess a couple of things. So it's recognizing that we don't, we're not suffering from a dearth of resources at the county, right? There's always something more that you're learning about and going, "Oh wow, I didn't even know about that," and man, that's really cool. So some of those moments happen in our sessions where we hear about something new, some of it happens where you just discover something. So for me, one of those moments this year was with my ninth grader when he had been doing a lot of his work on Google Drive and whatnot, and there was something that had to be done in PowerPoint. And I hadn't bought the subscription to Office 365, and I thought, "Well, let me just see, maybe there's something through Fairfax County." Well, sure enough, there is. There's a Microsoft, you know, you have the student license, you can get through the county. I had no idea until it occurred to me to just go out and search around and find that, right? So as we were talking in one of our committee sessions, we said, "You know, wouldn't it be nice to have an onboarding packet to your, welcome to your role as a Fairfax County parent?" This is just like when you start a new job, right? You get a whole stack of paper that says, "Here's all the things you need to do, you know, as part of your onboarding process, and then here's all of your benefits that you're entitled to as an employee of this organization." Well, Fairfax County is very similar to that, right? We expect our parents to do a certain set of things as part of their onboarding, and then they have access to this vast wealth of resources that could be considered benefits. So what we've talked about was something that might be, just as my little mock-up, I have visual aids, so not screen time. So something that maybe would just be, you know, a four, like a, you know, eleven by seventeen thing, front page would be a checklist, right? And it's a lot of stuff that we have to do every single year, right? Do your health information, do your emergency care form, sign up for news you choose, tailor it, you know, what are those things that we expect every single parent to do at the beginning of the school year? Just put them out there like a checklist. In the inside, and this is, again, we can tailor this, the inside might be something where you say, "Okay, these are the resources that are available to you, this is your benefits information," right? And we list all of the FCPS resources, could include tons of online resources, which again, we'll hit on that again in a moment, things like the Parent Resource Center, you know, what are all of those things that are available to us as benefits of being Fairfax County Public School parents? And then what are the associated ones? It might be county or community resources, the Cox Internet Program, the Microsoft Office example. You might even put things like SEPTA, the new special ed PTA, right? Where are the places that you can go that are associated with the schools when you, you know, based on the kinds of needs that you might have? So those three pages would be pretty standard across the whole county. And then the back, we thought, could be tailored to the specifics of a particular school. So for my school, other Herndon Elementary resources, here's your parent liaison. You have a little free library right in the front of the school, you're welcome to get books from there. These are, I know a lot of schools might have additional online resources that they pay for and manage at the school level, so whatever those things might be. And then just the basic questions, questions about any of it, who can they call that might, you know, be educated overall, might be the parent liaison, might be somebody else. But this, I think, was, is a brainstorm that we had that we believe would start to address this pervasive problem of like, how do we even find out about all the resources? Because the reality is just putting them out on the website doesn't solve the problem, because if you don't know what's out there, you don't know what to look for, number one. And number two, and we'll get to this again in a little bit, we kind of ask parents to navigate or be able to navigate or memorize the Fairfax County Public School org chart in order to be effective in meeting their child's needs, right? And sometimes I don't know where to go in the county, I just know, like, I don't know if I need a grant or if I need a business partnership, I just know I need something for my school, and we'll come back to that in a little bit. So this, something like this would help parents get up and running. Recommendation number one. Recommendation two is a little bit similar, but it takes a little bit different angle. We had the Office of Technology Resources, is that the right? Instructor, thank you, I don't get the names right.
But perhaps we could put page number three up there? I think that has the summary of your recommendation, so we can kind of follow along. Yeah, great, thank you.
So they came and presented kind of the ecosystem of digital tools, brought this really great handout that was four pages, back and front, you know, everything from Blackboard to Google Drive in classrooms, Adobe Digital Textbooks, eBooks, Microsoft Office, libraries, Myon, you know, lots and lots of digital resources available. So it's great, but once again, and I kind of feel like in some ways, I'm sort of a best-case scenario parent, right? I speak English, I grew up in Fairfax County, I went to Fairfax County Schools, like, I'm overwhelmed by this. It's too much, right? So looking at this, and we went through and we counted, and by our estimate, there were approximately 27 different logins required when you start breaking down by, you know, all these individual library databases and everything. And some of them might be the same, right? Some of it might be, we use your standard Fairfax County login across them, but as a parent, you don't always know that, right? You don't know that it's the same. So our thought was, what if we were to put the burden on these technologies to integrate into a backend and create a frontend portal with a single sign-on, so that, again, as a parent or as a student, you log into your FCPS digital portal, and from there, you can kind of browse around, you know? Here's a bunch of library places, well, what can I, I'm looking for a certain book or a certain topic, you know, can I look around and see if I can find them there? Or, you know, here's software that you can download, and here's how you, you know, kind of just be able to navigate that through a single frontend interface with a single login and password, instead of trying to keep track of all of these. Most of us on the committee had like handwritten things tacked to a board, which we may or may not remember, and, you know, we lost it, I remember seeing something at the beginning of the year, and I don't know where it is now. And our kids, our kids know the stuff they use better than the parents do. So, you know, helping the parents be able to access those resources, I think, will improve parents' ability to actually engage with their children on that content. Our third recommendation is a little bit different, it is different. So this, again, is more of a, where we've recognized a pervasive problem. So we had multiple interactions with resources that are available either to all students or specifically to Title I students, and we began to hear a consistent need around transportation. So there's a lot of, and some of this even came up last year where we were talking about the summer programs that are available in STEM, and, you know, well, that's great, but if it's a part-time program that's in, you know, at Lake Braddock and I'm in Herndon, that's not accessible to my Title I students unless we are really thinking about transportation. And even then, transportation that comes to the elementary school that's a mile and a half from my most needy Title I apartment communities, right, isn't necessarily practical, and it's a, you know, part-time program. So that was one that had come up. Another one, we had this fantastic group of young people, middle school and high schoolers, involved in an organization called Homework Helpers. Have you heard of it? I see some head nodding, yeah, these kids are amazing, they're at Rocky Run, they do voluntary tutoring, they have literally a waitlist to be a tutor at Rocky Run, that's how, that's how effective this program has been, right? And so they're not only doing that and making a huge difference in their couple of schools, but they're motivated to package this thing up and be able to take it to other middle schools and specifically target other Title I schools, which is amazing, and they're doing this all on their own volition. So they came to us and said, "Hey, can we come speak to your committee so that we can see where else this might fit?" They gave us a very professional, well-thought-out briefing about, you know, what they've done, how it works, and where they're trying to roll it out next. And one of their biggest challenges was, it was transportation. So they had, in one of the sites that they were targeting, they had the tutors, they had a location that was willing to host it, they certainly had interest in receiving the tutoring, but they couldn't get the kids from point A to point B to be able to receive this intervention. So what we don't have is a specific answer around that, because it's complicated. But what we recommend is that we try to specifically target that as a problem, and we pull in both Fairfax County Public School resources, Fairfax County resources, and even think creatively about how we might be able to partner with private companies or, you know, what can we do so that, you know, could we build a model of a partnership where companies are able to say, "Well, we want to help with X school, and we'll specifically help with transportation in some way." You know, what could that be? I think there's, again, we don't know exactly what that answer is, but I think, I think being able to, if we can figure out how to target it specifically and recognize that whatever those resources or programs or things that we're trying to offer to our Title I schools, we have to think about transportation at the same time and be strategic about So our last recommendation was, comes out of our conversations with the Business Partnerships Office and kind of with the Grants Office as well, but we noticed it specifically with Business Partnerships. And again, this is kind of an observation on the business model as much as anything, right? So it's not, what you have, you have very highly motivated staff that care a lot about trying to meet the needs of schools, but what they're doing right now is this kind of hub-and-spoke model, right? So you've got schools with needs, you've got donors that want to do stuff, and you have a matchmaker in the middle, right? So this is the old-school village matchmaker whose job it is to kind of know who's available and who's looking for what, and match them up one by one, right? This seems outdated to us, right? We're in a sharing economy, GoFundMe world, and with technology that could be available to do something that, where you use your Business Partnerships staff to enable a network-based structure where you can actually allow needs and donors to find each other a little bit more organically. I think this could also be done through approaches that are not even technology-enabled. So for example, if Business Partnerships or other county resources were to write a how-to guide where you say, you know, "How to get a business partnership? Well, step one, screen your parents at your school and find out what kinds of access they might have. Step two, do this," right? Something like that that would enable schools at the grassroots level to be able to form partnerships without having to kind of go through that hub-and-spoke model, we think would be a little bit more of a scalable approach. I think that was our, that was our observation, is that this, that hub-and-spoke model or matchmaker model can only grow so much, right? It's limited by those couple of people whose job it is to know all of the needs and all of the resources available. So the other thing that this, that approach like this would do, would allow needs and donors to be able to put out either what they're looking for or what they have to offer without trying to necessarily figure out exactly how it fits, again, into the Fairfax County org structure. So anecdote that we had was, there was someone who had approached the Grants Office, I believe it was, with a need around a chess club and was looking for some resources or support for this chess club, and so the Grants Office was tackling that. Well, turns out, there's another elementary school that absolutely had a strength in that area and that was able to offer something, but it wasn't a grant, you know what I mean? So sometimes we just end up, we get a little bit myopic because we kind of go to one place thinking that's what we need, whereas, you know, maybe that, maybe they didn't need a grant, maybe they needed a business partnership, or maybe they needed a school partnership or something different, so. Rather than, and they do, and I don't want to make it sound like they don't do any collaboration, they do, but my understanding is that I think it's a once-a-month meeting, so it's limited in the ability to be able to share needs across that. So the recommendation there is really to look for something that's more scalable, more interactive, and a little bit more organic at the grassroots level, so. We're excited, we all, I know you've heard from us every single year how much we love our parent liaisons, and, you know, we absolutely think that these kinds of things can extend the reach of what our parent liaisons can do. But one of the things that we're excited about with these recommendations as well is that there's really nothing here, other than, yeah, the technology roadmap, that's kind of a longer-term reach, we get that, but there's really nothing here that can't be done with current budget and resources, right? We're not coming saying, "Hey, we need X, Y, or Z to solve some problems." We're saying, "Here are things, simple things that we can do within our existing resources that can, we believe, improve the engagement and support that we have for our Title I schools."
Thank you very much. Other comments or that you'd like to share with us before we go to questions from board members? All right, well, I'm going to start with Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, ladies. I had the pleasure of being the liaison to your committee this year, and it was truly a wonderful experience. I was always impressed with not only the pre-planning and the work that went into successful meetings, but in the participation of those meetings, how people came to the meetings, always at a, you know, late evening, and just came prepared to bring good ideas and share a wealth of information. And so in looking at your recommendations, I think you captured a lot of the good ideas that were shared during the course of your meetings, and so I thank you for that. I actually wanted to address a couple of them from the standpoint of, you know, you're the Title I Advisory Committee. However, Title I is kind of a moving target as to how we determine who receives Title I funds and Title I supports based on a limited amount of money and an increasing demand for services at schools throughout the county. And so the floor for qualifying for Title I changes every year. That's why I like your recommendations, because your recommendations are good best practices that are scalable beyond the Title I schools and really help us address the need of those, of all schools, because I think the onboarding packet is a great idea across the county, but it's also something that would be helpful not only for elementary school parents, but middle and high school parents. And Title I doesn't apply to our middle and high schools. So I think your onboarding packet is a great idea, and your frontend technology interface, can we start with the school board? Because I can't tell you how many different passcodes I use, so thank you, I think that's a great idea as well. And as part of it, I would hope that a tool would be on teaching digital citizenship and making sure that we use the resources in a responsible manner, and so I would hope that that would be incorporated. And your task force on transportation is a major challenge. I would hope that in looking at that, you would also build in the connector bus system, because it's a great opportunity for us to do a couple of things. One is use resources that are provided by the county versus drawing on resources of the school system. It also, long-term, teaches our students about public transportation, and for those of us who, there are times where it takes me well over an hour to get to a school board meeting because of congestion on the Beltway, teaching people alternative sources and teaching students about using our public transportation, I think's a great idea. As a student, you know, I used to ride the bus all the time, I don't know what happened, and I grew up here. And on the charitable contributions approach, I welcome a refreshed look at how we do charitable contributions. I can't stand the concept of being fishermen and waiting until the fish jump into the boat. This is something that we do need to have a more scalable model, so I think that's helpful. I'm going to add one more piece, which is Grand Involve. Grand Involve is very helpful to some of our Title I schools, but it's a wonderful resource that they want to, first, they were recognized by the state of Virginia as a top volunteer activity. For those of you who don't know about Grand Involve, it is retired educators and civil servants that want to give back, and they're a wonderful resource, and they want to focus their efforts on Title I schools. And so if we could incorporate them into our plan of resources, I think that's going to be important. And I think that's about it, but thank you once again for all you do. You're a mighty force with limited resources, but greatly appreciated.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. Your recommendations, it would be great if we could do them all, and it's one, because you're right, it's, we all need all of these things. The onboarding packet, I have to chuckle, years ago before we had technology, we actually printed parent handbooks, and we had a regular parent onboarding handbook, we had a special handbook for special education, we had sports handbooks, we had, and for my colleagues on the school board, we had printed telephone directories, it was an org chart. And it was a great resource, because you knew where to go to get things. As we have become paperless and everything is on technology, and I don't, initially, we got, all the handbooks kept disappearing because of budget cuts, and we didn't print anymore. But it's interesting, when we acknowledge some of that information, then it becomes lost, because then you're searching for it on a website, or you're just going and searching for it, and you don't know, yeah, and you don't know what you don't know. And so I think we've come to the point where we need to figure out how to recapture some of that. I have no idea if there's money to do that, if Title I can do that. You wouldn't want to have to go back to your elementary school and say, "Would you guys please do that?" Because nobody's got, I mean, they're overworked and underpaid. But I think your acknowledgement that we have lost something in a basic tool that gives parents the how-to and where to find it. Yeah, I was going through 40 years' worth of stuff over the winter, and I was surprised at the stack of handbooks that we used to put out, and I kept them all, but they're not any good anymore, all the people are gone. But I think you raise a, you raise an excellent point about that. The second one, on the frontend technology interface, wouldn't that be wonderful? I have no idea. But again, you, you know, all of us are weighted down by our technology and getting into things and not getting into things, and then those people who actually have, you know, make their living off of technology. I had a friend who said, "Oh, I have 40 passwords that are changed every four days." And I go, "My God, that's terrible, I quit." But clearly, again, when you have the handout, and it's interesting how challenging that is, you've hit on a problem. I don't have a solution for it, but you've articulated the problem. The transportation is always a problem, and that's money, but at the other end, it is using the county buses, and when we meet with the Board of Supervisors, we talk about, can we ever combine all of the public sources of transportation in a more effective way? And, you know, I sometimes think, should we locate some of our extracurricular programs because they happen to be on a bus line or a train line? And think about it that way, rather than the other way around, saying, "Well, we have it at the school, but we have no way of getting back and forth." But again, I think we're well aware that that's-
Been considering, I mean, rest-in-limo, could rest-in-limo off-hours, right? If they're not, it's not during business hours?
Probably not, I'll be honest, because I think that, yeah.
Yeah, I've heard, I heard one example where one was approved, some other private transportation company was approved as a transportation provider.
Yeah, we do for special education, it's very, very expensive.
Okay. So I'm just, so we came from the perspective of business partnerships. Just thinking outside the box, right?
Right, which you could, but the bottom line is, we need to think differently about transportation, because we run programs and you can't get kids to it. So I'm wondering if we put the program where the transportation is, think about it in a different way. And the last one, and I liked your handout that showed, sort of like crowdsourcing for, because we have, you know, we have one very small office of Business Partnerships, and this is a great job, but how do we leverage, and that's one where probably technology does help to a certain extent. So I don't have any great answers, but you've raised excellent questions that are well worth pondering and to see what we can do to answer these in a better way. I guess the one question, can Title I funds be used for any of these, or is this not really? Anybody have any, because Title I funds are usually used for teachers, for people?
It really depends, so we do provide transportation for family field trips.
Right, but not for consistent-
But not for consistent programming, it would have to be attached to a program, and it would have to involve students, so there are very specific guidelines around how we pay for transportation using Title I grant funding.
Right, because I know for special activities, we can do it, but for ongoing extracurricular activities. So anyway, thank you very much, very creative, good questions, no answers, but we have to ask the questions first if we're ever going to find the answers, so thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
Just very briefly, I wouldn't produce anything else in paper. Most people, even parents in Title I, there's got to be an app for that. I mean, you've got to make it easier, you know, because they'll have the- easier, you know, because they'll have the resource with them, and they'll get the piece of paper, and it'll be at home, and they won't have it, and then we have to produce more. And some board members may, like, have environmental heartburn, you know? I mean, they're just, you know, they, I mean, honestly, we have to let technology help us to work smarter, not harder.
Yeah, as long as it's pushed in a way that, right, so it's not just put it on the website and come find it, right? That's what we're trying to get, that's what we're trying to get around, is that, right?
No, an app, like, literally an app, like, literally.
Yeah, you want to roll out an app? Sure. But again, we were trying to go low, low-cost, high-impact, right? How can you get something so that it's very easy to-
It would be less, it would be less cost, I honestly believe, to produce an app.
Right.
And frankly, make it a, honestly, the students could probably do it in a week.
Ms. Palchuk?
Sorry, listening to Ms. Schultz, another idea that came up, I don't know if you discussed it. And these are great, and I completely agree, that we really need to figure out how to increase access and communication in a way that's approachable and user-friendly. One other way is just maybe collecting cell phone numbers to do text messaging, that is huge these days, especially in our parent community. So I don't know if that's something you look at.
Yeah, a lot of our schools are doing that.
They are, okay. And I'm thinking information like this, we could maybe find an easy format, whether it's, you know, pushing out things that are maybe new on the app, or, you know, reminding people, you know, now's time to look at this, and now you can access this. So kind of, I love the idea you had, and then just finding ways to maybe make it mobile, user and environmentally friendly. But I do, I think it's huge. And speaking about the partnership side, I work pretty closely with the Children's Science Center, and they have received grants from Rest in Limousine. The thing is, the cost is so much higher than using our transportation-
Yeah.
-that it runs out really quickly, right? So I love it.
Yeah, not recommending any specific, we're just recommending that we need to target that.
No, I understand. And, and I do, I think we have to find ways, A, to make activities more accessible, to be out in, in neighborhoods and communities more with some of our programming and meetings, but also to try to find creative partnerships. So thank you for all you do.
I'll just say, I, I think these are very creative ideas. So thank you for, for bringing these to us. You know, the, the idea of the, of having all the different logons, you know, I, I think just in, in our, in our daily lives, we, it can drive us mad. So, you know, certainly with, with one entity, it would be great to have one logon. And I think that's something that maybe our, our IT folks can, can work with us on. You know, that's, that seems to be very doable, although easy for me to say.
Yeah, that would be a strategic plan.
Yes, I know.
Right, something to work towards, yeah.
And then the, you know, I, I do like the idea about the onboarding packet. I, I think it would, in this day and age, it would be hard to, to make it hard copy, but if we could have it available and just there, just there someplace, easy to find, you know? And, and somehow make it so each school could maybe make it their own. I'd have to think about how that would, would be. But then it would be adaptable, too. It would be, you know, sometimes these, these small things make a big difference. I remember one time a parent liaison called me from a school and said, the school board phone number isn't in this, this, this packet that, and it turned out, it, it was, but it was on, it was on another page. It was on another page. So we, we put it where people expected to find it. So, you know, we, we do have to remember that there are people who still use the telephone, you know, to reach us, and, and that's important, too. And I appreciate your, your support for the parent liaisons. As, as you know, we, we made a big step this year with, and this was, has been a recommendation of yours for a while, to, to bring the parent liaisons into where they need to be. And we, we, we made a, a major step towards that this year. So thank you so much for your advocacy and for your excellent report. And I believe with that, we, this work session is adjourned, and we are, we are finished with this work session. I do have to, to read a meeting, to go into closed meeting. I move to- Thank you very, very much. I move to discussing, consider personnel matters, including the assignment, appointment, or performance of specific employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous with a few people away from the table. And so we are now in closed session.